And councilors Bridget Matthews Kane, Nick Morganelli, and Dave Flaherty here. And we have guest Ralph Figgy, whose name was spelled funny in the agenda. It was spelled Raffy. I don't know if you saw that, but I must have been thinking of Nick's kid.
Maybe Rafael, yeah.
You gotta watch that autocorrect.
Yeah. So the only item we have on today's agenda is the zoning amendment in industrial A to allow taprooms under the accessory use section. We have a letter from Jay Vinsky dated September 9th. It has the recommendations from the planning board. And we have the original petition for zoning amendment from Councilor Figgy. So Councilor Figgy, why don't you just give us a quick overview of what you want? And we'll go from there.
What I would like is that I'd like to have taprooms treated the same as restaurants in that it's a by right function of industrial 1A. I think that it's a situation that brought to me because of a situation here in Ward 2. I think taprooms are an amazing thing. I think that they are different than bars. They're different than restaurants. They have a different atmosphere to them. And I think it's important to allow a manufacturer to allow samples for the product that he is manufacturing so people may buy more of those. So, and I don't know if you saw the article in the paper about how taprooms are booming nationwide. And I just see them as an added benefit to the city.
Thank you. And I was at the first, you know, the public hearing where you announced this and talked about it. And then I was also at the planning board here. And so I've heard the discussion from them. The planning board approved it as recommended by Jay, but sent a couple of comments on suggestions that they might want to have it by special permit. There were a few people that thought that a special permit would give the citizens time to weigh in before the place is opened up. And they thought that was important. The majority of the planning board, however, didn't see that. And they voted to send it through the way Jay recommended. Any councilors have questions for Mr. Figgy? Uh, Nick?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. No, I just wanted to just expand upon the, some of the bullet points from the planning board hearing. And, and give you my, what I got as the takeaway from that and they, from them, from the planning board. But basically, you know, from what, from what I understand it is, as Jay Vinsky described, this is a broad change to the, to the industrial A use. And it's not for a specific business. It's, it's, this is a broad change. It's, it's a different license than a new bar. So, you know, Ralph, Councilor Figgy said it's not opening up a new bar because it's obviously a different license. But they're just expanding on what they've done in industrial A. And it's likened to a winery. I like that analogy that Councilor Figgy gave where you go to a winery, a vineyard, you sample wines and they're made there, they're sold there. And you, it's like an experience. And, and some of the planning board members talked about some of the places, the taprooms they've been to in Massachusetts especially, and that they were good experiences and that they, you know, they enjoyed that. There was a question about parking and Jay Vinsky again said that, you know, that the building inspector would make sure that they abide by all the rules that are already in place for parking. So that's not an issue. And planning board member Saloy did, did want to see a special permit. He wanted the planning board to have a little more control over, over where it goes in industrial A. But many of the members didn't think that was going to be an issue. I personally don't think it's going to be an issue at all. And, and I guess that's the no votes. It was, I guess, five, three in favor from the planning board and with the favorable recommendation to us in this subcommittee and into the council. But the noes were, said that if it was, if there was a special permit added to it, that they, they, I think there would be a yes. I think that's from what I understood it. So that's, you know, I just wanted to kind of mention those things to be part of our, of the record here for this meeting. But personally, I don't really see any negative effects from this. I mean, you can put a restaurant in industrial A right now. You can put a, there are already, you can put a marijuana sales shop there right now. And if there's, and you can put a brewery there right now. So this is just adding a tasting room or a small area where you can, you know, or, or an area where you can taste the beer that's brewed there. Maybe there's food, maybe there isn't, but I really don't see any, any major impact to anyone in the area. Cause again, it's, it's industrial A anyway. So that's it. That's all I got.
And I think, yeah, thank you. And I, I think a restaurant that has a bar in it has to get the appropriate liquor license. So there is follow-up approval process for a place that serves alcohol.
I would like to echo that point. There's additional oversight if you're a restaurant with a bar.
Right. So I think that was one of the things the planning board said is, well, this is kind of a, you know, they're turning into a less licensed liquor establishment. And it's not just for sampling. People go there and watch sports games and hang out for hours. You know, it is comparable to a bar that's selling a limited product. And I think that was one of the concerns of the planning board. So go ahead, Bridget.
So I have, I have much to say on this topic. I'd like to preface everything I'm going to say by the fact that I think taprooms are in general a great idea. I've been to them. I enjoy them. I think they're a wonderful addition to the city. And for the part of the city where this particular establishment that wants it added, it would be perfect. There's, it's very industrial. There's no residential area around it. So if every industrial area in Westfield was like the one in Ward 2, I would, I would say yes. I would approve this. However, we have industrial areas scattered throughout the city. And they're all very different. And in fact, I think part of the issue behind this is a lot of our industrial areas are not up to date. I don't know when the last time we updated is, but one example I'll give that's not in my ward is when I was a kid growing up, H.B. Smith had a factory in downtown Westfield and it was zoned industrial. So I would walk home from school and there was a factory there. However, now it's stop and shop, but it's still zoned industrial, but it's not in really industrial area anymore. And I have a similar analogous situation in my ward. So one great thing about my ward is I have seven different zoning areas in my little ward. And one of them is industrial A. Does anyone know where industrial A is in Ward 3? It's not a rhetorical question. It's an actual question.
My guess, Orange Street.
Say again?
My guess would be Orange Street.
Yes, exactly. So you know Sackett Street where the DPW yard is? That's zoned, that's zoned industrial A. And it is right next to a very residential, tightly packed residential neighborhood. And it would, in some ways, it would be a great place for a brewery and a taproom because it would, you could build it so it overlooked the river. It would, that would be great, but it would also be right next to a very densely packed residential neighborhood. And I think just allowing that without limits on it could be a nightmare for those neighbors. When it's when people, if it was a crowded place and when it closed down, people would be walking to their cars. They would be walking down the street. It would be very noisy, especially if you know Sackett Street. Those, there's not a lot of space around those houses. So it would really echo. It would be very loud and noisy and disruptive. And to just let them do it without any oversight, I think would be a mistake. So again, if, if it was like the section in Ward 2, I probably wouldn't have an issue with it. But I know my industrial section, it would not be a benefit to the residents. So in general, and I'm saying here, I would say yes to it if it were by special permit. I would say no to it if it were by right. And I would also like to talk a little bit about some of the arguments that are being made. I think we're comparing apples to oranges when we make all these other comparisons. So taprooms are being compared to vineyards. If you have a vineyard, there's a lot of space. Sure. There's like miles of grapes. And so you can have one away from residences. It's not going to disrupt them. So I don't think that's a fair comparison. As for marijuana being industrial A, you still have to get the permit. It's not by right. We have limited, and then we have a hearing about where it's going. So that's also not the same comparison. And as for the restaurants, if, if, this is more analogous to a bar in my mind. And a restaurant that does have liquor has to go through, I'm not a hundred percent sure. I wish Jay were here, like there's a permitting process or a liquor board that you have to go in front of. And if we just do this by right, there wouldn't be that. So again, just to summarize, yes to special permit process, no to by right. That would be my position.
And who do you think should issue the special permit?
I would be fine with planning board. I think they are, they do a good job. I, I mean, I would also do city council if you felt that was important. But um, I think planning board does a good job.
Go ahead, Nick.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, Bridget, great, great, you know, great stuff on that. I did want to echo what Jay had sent, which kind of mentions what, what Bridget just said, Council, Council Matthews Kane. He said, you know, can this accessory use be allowed by a special permit? And he answered, this was from a letter he sent on October 5th. So this is just sent this week. He said, "The council should compare other by right uses in this district, large warehouses, manufacturers, marijuana shops, to consider if a taproom's effect might be so potentially disproportionately impactful to a neighborhood on a case-by-case review." And then he says, "Changing the language to a special permit discretionary use may be substantial enough so as to warrant a new public hearing before adoption." That may be LNO's concern. Assume it will be referred to them, but as we said, we couldn't give it to the planning board too. And/or the city solicitor's opinion may wish to be sought if a special permit provision is considered." And then he had a little asterisk here. He says marijuana establishments require a site plan approval, public hearing, and may also trigger a special permit if proposed within a certain distance from parks, schools, churches, residences. And I think that's what Council Matthews Kane is looking for. Yes? No? What do you think?
Yes, yes. I would want, because mine, like if you did industrial A, it's right across the street from Holy Trinity. It's right next to residences. You know, and it would disproportionately affect that neighborhood. I agree though, that other neighborhoods that are industrial A, it, it, there wouldn't be an impact. But the problem is all the industrial areas in our town are not all created equal. Some of them are kind of, because there was a factory there 150 years ago. Not because it's currently industrial. I mean, I know technically it's zoned industrial, but there's, it's not being used for an industrial use currently. Like the stop and shop is my other example. It doesn't feel very industrial there currently.
So Nick, you read that asterisk paragraph. And when I was thinking what Bridget was saying about a special permit, I wasn't thinking that it had to be as complicated as a site plan approval. Cause that, that's an extra burden on a business to do a site plan approval.
Okay.
I think if it's a special permit where somebody, you know, files a piece of paper and comes in and talks about it and then gets approved or denied fairly quickly, I think that's okay. But I wouldn't expect them to have to go hire an engineering company to draw blueprints in parking and do traffic studies and noise studies and all that.
I concur. Like I don't think they need to go to that level. I think it's more about hours in parking and just imposing some limits on what they are and are not allowed to do. Or, you know, like a, the only way I can see a site plan approval is if you had to put up like noise barriers, but could, could you do that under special permit? You could, right?
I would.
Well, I guess that would Jay would.
Yeah, that'd be a site plan change, I would think. But then Jay suggests here that even if we make a special permit, that might be a substantial change in the proposal, that it might require another public hearing.
Yeah, but we'll just resubmit and just have another public hearing and just push it forward.
Yeah, I'm not so sure it does because I know we talked about that in our public hearing. And then again, in the planning board, they talked about it during their public hearing. And they got the feedback from the citizens who suggested a special permit. So I think that's already been explored. I don't necessarily think responding to requests and concerns of people that were at the public hearing justifies having another one, I think.
Yeah. And I, I thought my memories, and there's a former counselor listening in right now. If my memory is correct, she said, yes, she, she would like it if it were a special permit process. That's my memory. So you're right, it was special permit process was covered under the previous public hearing.
Okay. So I think we're getting to a point of consensus. Now go ahead, Nick.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah. And, and you know, when I, when I read that marijuana establishment thing from, from Mr. Vinsky, I, I, yeah, that was a site plan. And I, and I agree with you, Mr. Chairman, that the, we don't want to go to that extent. But you know, in the proposed zoning, zoning language, can we just put language in there? Can we add language to it that includes distances, churches, parks, schools, residences? Or, or, or can we, should we not do that?
Is that, we leave that to the planning board. If, if it is a special permit, that's one of the things that people in the neighborhood come in and talk about. You know, so sometimes.
No, I'm not talking about a special permit. I'm saying put the language right in the zoning ordinance that we've got in front of us.
I think that makes it harder and it's not as necessary here as it is for some other things. Like you could have it in a, a business plaza that backs it up to a residential area that's on the other side of a bike path. And it's really not going to affect that homeowner, you know? And I think we want to give the planning board discretion. You know, when, when we put it in there for marijuana, they, they drew little lines around it to show how much of industrial A would be affected. And it really took out a lot of the spaces that were available. So I think, me personally, I don't think we need it. And I think it's overly burdensome. And that the planning board would have a broader level of discretion if we didn't put that in there. But I'm okay if that's what you guys want to do as a majority, but.
So you're, so you're saying you're in favor of, you, you think we should do the special permit and let the planning board deal with it and say, you know, that's a good place for the taproom? Or, oh, you know what? It's too close, that's too close to residences or that's too close to this playground? Or we don't really like it there. Can you choose that other, you know, abandoned warehouse? Or do something else in that area, not there? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah. And I, but I think a public hearing is appropriate. Like when they, when they take up that special permit, the public should be able to come in and ask questions and express opinions that then drive the planning board's decision, hopefully. You know, I know they don't always listen to people at the stadium, podium any more than we do. But you know, that's the intent of the public hearing is to get feedback. Go ahead, Kristen, uh, Kristen, Bridget.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm, I'm just in general, I'm a big fan of the public hearings because it's fundamentally democratic. Like people who live in the area get to come in and say what they think. And I know what you're saying, like they can or cannot be listened to. But I find in general, if people are making persuasive arguments, they are. And, and it's also like, how many people show up? Is it one person? Is it 10 people? Or they might show up and say, we'd love a taproom right next door. So it, it just, it allows the neighbors to speak up about something that could really affect their quality of life and their property values. So I like.
Good. And then Jay pointed out that this is an accessory use, not a primary use. And that we have right now special permits for primary use. And this would be kind of a unique animal to do a special permit on accessory use. But I don't see that as a significant problem. I think because of the nature of this, there can be an exception. And I, I don't have a problem with that. I think addressing the concerns of the neighbors is more important than, you know, how we write it up in the, in the ordinance.
I concur. And, and he's saying it's not that it can ne- never happen. It just doesn't usually happen. The way he describes it, he's leaving us room to make this choice.
Sure. All right. Councilor Figgy?
Yeah, I just like, if you guys are going down this route of the special permit, just check with legal to make sure that we don't need another second hearing, another public hearing. I, I would like to get this on the books as soon as possible. I understand all the arguments that you're making at going towards a special permit. And I can live with that as long as we don't have to go through this process all over again.
Right. Yeah. So we don't have it on the docket for Thursday because I wasn't sure, you know, we'd be ready in time. So it'll come out at our next meeting. And before then I'll get an opinion of law. And then, you know, we can probably write this up and get it ready where we, maybe we can do first reading by title only as we send it to LNO and then give them two weeks to come back. And you know, that'll bring it out, you know, before Thanksgiving time.
Perfect. But that would work. That would.
We have to do, I think we have to do two readings though, you know? So the first one maybe.
Does need two readings. The other thing you can remember is if you do a taproom in business, you don't go through any of this. You just go to the state for your, your farmer's pouring license.
Right.
It's by right there. So I mean, if you went by right, it's consistent across the board with the other taprooms in town.
Right. But there are some people that don't like that by right, you know, for taprooms. These taprooms are, are going far beyond the original, come in and sample my wine and then go away. You know, buy a bottle and go away. These are turning into hangout spots that are very comparable to bars. They're bringing in trucks. They're bringing in entertainment, food trucks. So, so I think it's worthy. And if we want, we can go back and edit the business A to do the same thing. You know, we don't have a petition for that, but that's something that we could consider. You know, and it's not like we have them knocking on our door every month. You know, there's a few of these things, you know, a year maybe that come through. So it's not overly burdensome to have it at a public hearing.
No, no, it's not.
All right. So, so can I say the recommendation of this group is to allow it by special permit and to make the adjustments under industrial A as necessary to accomplish that and refer to LNO?
Second, are you making a motion?
Yeah. So that would be the motion. So.
Again, but doesn't, isn't this contingent upon legal? Are we referring this to legal as well?
Yeah, I'm going to refer to LNO and legal. Yep. Yep. I'm going to try to work with legal before we bring it out so that they can adjust things. It, I, I don't see that this is illegal. But that, it's a matter of how we write it up. There, there's nothing in Jay's thing that says it's illegal. It's whether it would trigger another public hearing or not. That's what I think what Ralph was suggesting, right?
The only great way it would trigger enough, but if you substantially change the ordinance as proposed, because the public hearing was not on special, permit was on by right. So if that's a big change, then we have to do it all over again.
Right.
Hopefully you said, let it go.
Your proposed motion was to allow taprooms similar accessory uses in industrial A district. It didn't say by right in your zoning amendment. You left the word by right off. And then during the public hearings, we heard from people that wanted a special permit. And then when it went to planning board, we heard a special permit. Your application does not say by right. It just says to allow it in industrial A. So I think we're going to be good. I'll run it by Shannon.
It's, it really has already been discussed. The special permit has already been discussed, other than the, other than the language of what would the special permit say? What, what is that? And, and I think we've already heard that too, you know, in proximity to X, Y, A, B, C, D, you know, whatever.
Right. And I think Jay's given us some, you know, suggestive language here. And I think the specific language is something that legal and LNO can do. I mean, I can take a whack at it, but that's kind of their primary job is to write it up legally. And it's only a couple of sentences. So I don't think it's overly burdensome to pass this to them, you know, in concept form. You know, sometimes I do try to write them up and then hand it off as a legal, you know, as an order, a proposed order. But in this case, I think it's such a small amount that it wouldn't be overly burdensome to send it to the law department.
I don't think I'm being over burdensome.
No, not at all. No. And you used to be on LNO.
Yeah, I know. I used to chair.
Do you want to clarify the motion, Mr. Chairman? And then we can, we'll take voters.
The motion is to, the motion is to recommend taprooms by, by special permit in industrial A and to refer to LNO and legal.
Do we need to say it's special permit in front of planning board?
Yes.
Yes. Yeah. Special permit of planning board in industrial A and refer to law department and LNO at the next city council meeting.
It, well.
Second.
Well, okay, refer.
The next available city council.
The next available meeting, yes.
Oh yeah, valid point.
Okay. So that's good?
Yes.
All right. And so Bridget seconded, Nick said aye. I say aye. Bridget, your aye?
Aye, yes.
Three, zero. Okay. Councilor Figgy, congratulations.
Well, thank you. Let's go have a beer.
And I can't wait for that new taproom to open up in Ward 2. That's a perfect location. That's, that's a great, there's nothing around there but factories and the bike trail.
Exactly.
Perfect.
Especially, especially since the Christian school moved out of the factory.
Exactly.
It really helped a lot. So.
All right. So I have a topic that wasn't on the agenda at the time the agenda was created. And I just want to give you an update on what happened last night at planning board, in case you didn't watch that long meeting. But the city council had a joint public hearing the other night. And we referred the 121A agreement to the planning board. The planning board had a public hearing about the special permits that were required for the buildings and the stormwater and all that stuff. And they kept that open. They went for maybe an hour, hour and a half, took a lot of questions, gave a lot of information, asked, you know, good stuff, but they decided not to act on it that night. They kept the public hearing open. Then the next agenda item they had was the 121A agreement, which is the entire agreement, not just the six findings that are necessary or seven findings that are necessary. They discussed very quickly the seven, or six or seven findings that were pre-written by Mr. Vinsky. They all kind of said, let's go and do this right now tonight. And then two of the members had several questions and asked for it to be delayed while they had chance to investigate and negotiate and make recommendations, that kind of stuff. They got overruled and the board decided to pass a recommendation back to city council that we accept the 121A agreement as written and accept all of the findings as true. So we're going to see that tomorrow night. It's coming back to the city council. And I believe it's probably going to get referred to finance. I'm guessing the way it went the other night. And finance will do something with it and probably come back within 45 days. Hopefully not the next day. And it's going to move along. There were a couple of people on the planning board that are not happy. I was not very happy at all last night when they did it. They did not investigate anything. It was extremely rushed. It was no discussion about anything. It was really not.
You mean those, sorry, may I?
The findings, yes.
Question, you mean the findings? There was no discussion on the findings?
Right. Well, there, there were, there were several findings and they're, you know, they're clearly defined in the law that you have to find for them. But you have to have a discussion about them and give examples of why those findings are appropriate, you know, for this particular project. It's not like you say, yeah, I agree. This complies with the laws. You have to kind of discuss it and write up a little report. And then the part that they never really discussed was the 121A agreement. So they, they talked about the findings and that, you know, there was some back and forth. And again, two of them didn't feel there was enough information to do the findings, but they were outvoted. And then there was very little discussion about the 121A agreement, which is the entire package. It's the, you know, they're, the whole half inch thick application that came in is the 121A agreement. They didn't spend any time going over that. They didn't talk about the finances or anything. They actually had a discussion that said, that's not really our role where the planner is not, you know, we don't want to get involved in this. But the law says they can and should get involved. You know, that's part of their roles to review that 121A agreement and make recommendations. And they, they. Review that one twenty-one A agreement and make recommendations. And they, they really didn't do that. So I wasn't really happy. Um. But it's kind of, you know, I know it was on the fast track. It's coming back to council. It's going to go somewhere to some committee. Um, and hopefully we have time. To fully investigate what we need to do before we decide. Um, because I think this is a, a critical project for the city. It's a forty-year deal. You know, there's tens of millions of dollars of stuff going on here. This, um, you know, major impact on. The city, the electrical grid, the environment, all that kind of stuff. And, um. Just jamming it through without proper deliberation, I don't think is fair. So. That's my update from planning board. So you'll see that tomorrow coming out, I believe. It's magically, you know, that was on our agenda before the planning board even met last night, which, you know, it's kind of an interesting twist. You know, they, they put it on the agenda Tuesday before the planning board even met. So that's the update from that. Any other, um. Questions or topics that we should be discussing on ZPD that you guys know of? Hmm. Well.
I'm also.
Another thing to consider is that this one twenty-one A agreement is certainly. In the purview of ZPD. It's a significant development project in the city and ZPD. You know, could ask to take it up, take it up here. There's, you know, there's a significant amount of. Things that are going on in this deal that are in ZPD territory. We could look at it if you want, but I don't think we'll get much support from the city council the way things went the other night, but. We could ask for that if, if you think that's important.
I. Um. Yeah, I, I think we, you know, we've, um. You know, you, you in particular asked a lot of questions, uh, on Monday night. We, we all asked questions. Uh, the public was there, um, planning boards had their hearings. Um, I, I don't, I don't think, you know, throwing it into this committee is. It's really going, I think it's, at this point, it, it's. It's, um, you know, it's, it's a finance situation. For sure. I, I would have liked to have seen it go into, uh, long range and. The finance committee, maybe have a joint meeting between those two subcommittees. I think that would have been maybe more appropriate than just. Having, uh, three people look it over and as you, you've got more eyeballs on it and then they come out with a. Four-two or, you know, a, a five-one decision or something like that. And, uh. And, and you know, that, that would have been, uh, I think served the people better as to have more eyeballs kind of looking at all the. Right. The details of it, you know, but I, I think the, the council, we've all, we've all gotten the same information and.
Uh, one of the things I can say is that I, I, you know, I got to ask questions, but I didn't get to make a presentation. And that's the kind of thing, you know, we can do in city council, but. You know, I have information from data centers all over the country about how much money these things make and what they pay currently in taxes, even in Massachusetts. They're paying ten times this tax in Massachusetts currently right now for places that are. You know, significant in size. It's not like they're, you know, data centers that are in closets. These things are two and three hundred thousand square feet. And they're paying full tax value. Up here with the high energy costs and all that. So I think it's important for. The citizens in the council to realize that. These are massive moneymakers and we have a, an ability to get a little bit better deal if we try. And I also think we have to have the understanding that this isn't the only game in town. If these guys walk away, we can put a bid out for this thing and get competitors. There's. Competitor right in Connecticut that's tying up five, they've already tied up five communities in Connecticut for these deals. So these guys aren't the only game in town. And if they walk away. We shouldn't feel like we're going to, oh, we're going to lose all this tax money because we're not. We have the ability to rebid this. To somebody else. They don't own any of this land right now. They just have options. We could do this through our Westfield redevelopment authority. And put it out on the street and get people to bid on it. The, the, the target audience for these things is rather narrow. So we can have. The ability to reach out to everybody that's in this field and say, here's what we're offering. Would you like to bid on this? Yeah. I think it could be successful. Um, I, I think these.
Sometimes being a little patient is, uh, is, is the better thing to do.
Yes. And I, I think these guys are really, really interested. They have a very good. Plan, uh, you know, I've done some of these on a smaller scale, of course, but they really have done their homework. They're. Uh, doing all the right things as far as I'm concerned. It's just. How it's treating the city unfairly financially. We're, we're giving away the store. Now I said, it's like, it's like having a, a. You know, your grandmother's car parked next to your house for a couple of years. You know, and not thinking much about it. And then somebody comes along and says, hey, you know, that thing's been sitting there empty and it's kind of rusty tires on it and it's kind of dirty. I'll give you a hundred bucks for it. And then you say, well, okay, a hundred bucks is better than nothing. Maybe I should take it. But in reality, maybe if you put it down on eBay. Or you called up a car dealer, you might get ten times the value of that person who's walking in out of nowhere, offering you the hundred bucks. Right? Maybe you pull the tarp off that it's in a fifty Chevy Chevy with ten thousand miles on it. You know, so I, I think that's the case here too. We're jumping at the first deal without really evaluating what the other options are, without really understanding. The market value of the asset that we have. So. Um, I, I'm hoping we can spend time to explore that without just rushing. To judgment. So that's my two cents. Any, any comment, Bridget? You. You're on the board, you're on the other panel, so. Hope your, your mic's off.
My dog started barking, so I had to mute myself. Um, I am on finance, so, um. And I'm on long range finance.
Yep.
Um, I think you raise important points, but. If, if. If you're going to make the arguments you're making, and if they've refuted one of your arguments, you have to refute their refutation. Like if they're saying the Boston market's totally different. That it's apples to oranges. If that's untrue, then you have to prove that their claim is untrue. So I, I don't want to hear the same arguments you made. On Monday, if we're going to continue the discussion.
Like you have the data from Loudon, Virginia too, which is the area that they're saying is so. Uh, advantageous. And the Loudon numbers are significantly higher than this deal too. Even on the graphs that they showed us, you can see. The tax load in Loudon compared to us. Um.
That's why they want to move though, you know, is because they're, it, it, because that's. The impression I got from the discussion on Monday was that those rates are going up significantly now.
Yeah. Uh, in Loudon, they, well, they get assessed every year like a normal business. They have to file. Uh, you know, their business paperwork and they get assessed on the value that's. You know, economic value that they generated. So.
So I'm willing to revisit these arguments if you refute their refutations, but.
Well, I think, I don't want to make.
Argument.
Yeah. They, they didn't prove, they, they disagreed with me, but they did not prove that this is a different market. That the market in Boston is. You know, very competitive too. The, the buildings are a tad smaller, but.
But, but they're saying, they did refute that pretty thoroughly, the Boston market. They explained why that's a different animal. So.
I'll have to watch the tape.
Your two, your two, your two options are to say, no, that's not true, or to refute their refutation.
Right.
To say why it's not true. And that's what I need to hear to continue.
I can put the data up for Loudon because that's the one they claim is so good. And I think that would help people compare. Um.
As long as it's not the same thing we heard on Monday, if it's a new argument. That's my.
Well, I can, what I didn't get a chance to do on Monday was present the numbers. You know, I've gone around and collected a lot of these numbers, not, and not only here, but in Connecticut too. They also said that, you know, they were trying to compete with Connecticut. I have the numbers from some of those deals in Connecticut. And they're not even coming close, so.
But their refutation of the Connecticut deals is that the state legislature is going to start offering a new break that we as.
No, they've already done it. No, that's what they were saying. Connecticut already did it. That's why these other companies in Connecticut are going after these municipalities. And the agreements that they're getting after the Connecticut law passed are much better. From the taxpayers' perspective than the deal we're getting here in Westfield.
Because that's because the state is giving them a break. We're the reverse. In Connecticut, the state gives the break and the city gets more money. And then in Massachusetts, it's reversed. I, that was the impression I had.
Yeah, I know, but that's not, the, the state of Connecticut is not charging sales and use tax. They allow this community, just like here in Massachusetts under one twenty-one A, to negotiate the land and property tax. In Connecticut. It's like our pilot. So each of these towns in Connecticut. Is negotiating a pilot payment that includes the land and the buildings. And the personal property that they have locally.
Well, that sounds like. Then to me, that's your most promising argument. And I would be curious to hear more, but I don't want to hear. Simply repeating what was said on Monday is my only.
I agree.
It sounds, looks like Counselor Figgy's.
Yeah, so, Counselor.
Only concern I have is this, this is new information. The public hearing is closed.
Yeah.
I don't know how you.
Well, that's where I wanted to keep the public hearing open because there was so much that we couldn't present. We, the public hearing that we had was mostly questions. It wasn't the ability to present information. You know, and that. That's a real problem on a, a deal of this size. It's really, really a significant deal. And I, I think there's too many people at the table that feel that this is the best we can do, just because it's the only thing that walked in the door. And I'm trying to show that there is other opportunity there and we should be looking at that. And we should be able to argue with these people that we need a better deal. Um, if we can't do that if we don't investigate. You know, I think if, that right now, when the public hearing is closed, the matter goes to finance. Part of finance's job could be to say, hey, is this a real valid deal or not? And let's, let's us on finance go compare this deal to other deals that are already existing in Boston, in Connecticut, New Jersey, Virginia. These are all public records and very easy to do.
But, but they're not always apples to apples.
Well, yeah, they are. It's based on square foot tax, the total tax load by square foot plus the, you know, the energy costs and it's all public record. You know, it, it's.
Again, their, their arguments last night were that it's not apples to apples, it's apples to oranges. You have to refute their refutation. You can't just repeat the same argument you made the first time. That's my opinion.
Goes with somebody coming to buy your grandmother's car. They're going to tell you it's a horrible piece of crap and it's only worth a hundred bucks. And then if you go do some research on your own and you go to. You know, a car dealer or you talk to a friend who's a collector, you get a different opinion. It takes a little bit of work. And in Westfield's case, we haven't done that work yet. We really haven't. There's nobody that's explored this. And I can tell you that because I've talked to the assessor and I've talked to the community development officer, I've talked to the mayor. I've talked to the treasurer. They have not done any research and explored this. They've, they've been given this deal and been told it's a take it or leave it deal. Without. Any investigation or negotiation.
That was.
I, I know, I, you're hearing a different story than I've experienced and that's.
No, I'm saying like we have a different role and. Like the Supreme Court can't be. The Congress, you know, um.
Yeah, no, I, I get it. Yeah.
So I, I think, I, I don't, and I don't want to, this wasn't on the agenda.
Yeah, no, no, that's, that's. No, I, I don't want to argue, but I, I will say that we do have the right to negotiate the deal. That's written right in one twenty-one A paragraph six. That is the role of the planning board and the city council is to negotiate the deal. It's in there. We get a proposal and then our job is to vote for the proposal, make recommendations to change the proposal or deny the proposal. We have the ability to do that. And right now, nobody.
You sent that to me with that section highlighted?
Yes. I just sent it to the planning board.
That's public record. I'm not asking for anything that's not, um.
No, and this is all.
I, and I think, I think it's important if the public meeting is closed. I voted to keep it open.
No, but the public meeting only refers to getting information from the public, not our internal conversations and research with our. Uh, city counselors and city staff. We have the right to go beyond what was presented at a public meeting to. Collect our own information necessary to have a deliberation. It, it's not that we can only consider things that were available at the time of the public hearing. We have the right to, for example, go ask the law department for an opinion on. One twenty-one A six, paragraph six. Um. So there are a lot of things we can do. I just think we're really, really rushing this. Without doing our homework first. Uh, and. I think the citizens are losing out because of it. So. I, I hope we take some time to do it the right way. And.
Yeah, I would just encourage you to refute their refutations. If they've refuted something you said pretty thoroughly. You have to refute the, you can.
I'll watch the tape because I didn't, I didn't get that.
Argument.
Yep. I'll watch the tape because I didn't get that impression from them that they. Refuted with evidence. As a matter of fact, we asked them for several things and they refused to give us the information. So.
They did, but not on, they, a few places.
I'll ask, you know, I'll watch the tape. Yeah.
Yeah, I.
I'll also get the.
That would be my humble advice.
There were, there were questions asked of them. That we were expecting answers to at the next. You know, when we continued the public hearing and now it's closed. So I guess we're not going to get those answers. I mean, I, I need some answers for, you know, the residents of Ward one.
Yeah. And, 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 and because the planning board still had an open meeting, like I sent a letter to somebody saying, make sure you ask X. Cause that was still open.
Hmm.
And it is still open.
Well, only on.
And, and that, but the one twenty-six is.
One twenty-one A, yeah.
One twenty, thank you. One twenty-one.
Yeah, one twenty-one A, section six is the process and section six A is the legal settlement. Yeah. Or the, you know, the legal agreement. Yeah.
But, um. And, and they, it, it's true that they talk, it was a four-hour meeting. Some things they did not answer. But some things they did.
Yep.
And if they gave an actual answer that refuted a point.
Right. And I do have a few of those because the, uh, the lawyer. Gave a couple of examples. I, I think of a parking garage that complied with this and I talked to DHCD about that and. It's just not accurate. And I went and looked at the parking garage. Project and it's a parking garage attached to a housing development that was part of the deal. And then it also said right in that contract that there was no pass-through of it.
Yeah, and it, that does sound like you're refuting something, but I don't, and I'm nervous, like, I don't, are we legally allowed to have, I just.
Yeah, this was not, yeah, it wasn't, it wasn't anticipated at the time we created our agenda over a week ago. So, yeah, we're allowed. So, but and the matter is not coming to us, obviously. You know, but it, it is a zoning matter. I, I think it could have gone here or to long range.
But it could go everywhere. It could go to natural resources. I mean, we could send it everywhere.
Yeah.
Um.
Yeah. So, all right. So I'll, I'll leave it there. I'll try to get you some stuff that is appropriate legally. And I hope to be able to have time to express and share this information with the council. In, in, in a way that leads to productive deliberations in a real way. That's goal. I, 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 I just don't want this to be jammed through. Without deliberation. I think that's really unfair. Uh. To everybody.
I share your goal and like where you're talking about the parking garage, sounds like you're refuting a refutation, which sounds good.
Yeah.
But, um.
All right.
I, I just don't want to, I think people don't want to hear the same thing.
I know. Yep. But I wish they would actually investigate on their own and not decide. That that person has more credibility than me when I've spent a hundred hours researching this. Just because as a proponent. At the stadium saying something doesn't mean it's true, any more than that first guy that comes up to your house says your car is only worth a hundred bucks.
Yeah, but it's an argument. It's an argument and, and they get to make their argument and we can ref, you can refute it. But if they're, if it sounds. You know, we're, no one on council will be able to research every single point.
No, but I was hoping they would do a little bit. Yeah. You know, if we send them in the right direction. You know, I, I was hoping they could. You know, come to a, you know, independent decision. That supports certain things. So I think that's important.
Yeah, but I mean, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, go ahead.
Morganelli. I'm sorry, I'm not even the chair. Sorry.
Uh, I was, uh, going to make a motion.
Oh, go for it.
Motion to, um. Motion to close the meeting.
Absolutely. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Very much. I'll send you that, Bridget, in a couple of seconds.